Brian, did you guys get all the concrete work done?
We did, thanks.
Good, you?
Good. Shows you how much everyone wants to be near the exit. There's tons of chairs over here, but squeeze in on that side.
Shocking back row is completely full.
Brian?
Yes, we had a lot of time to leave.
Yes. It is nine o'clock. We are here for our regularly scheduled business meeting, and we will start with our invocation.
Alrighty, good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here this morning. I'd ask that you would join me in a word of prayer. Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for who you are, and we thank you so much for your plans and your purposes for our city. Lord, we thank you so much for what you are doing in Bonner County, and we pray that you would bless our county. Lord, for your word says that you, that our blessing is in its blessing, and our welfare is in its welfare. So we pray that you just pour out your blessing on this region. That you bless the leadership, that you would give us wisdom, that you would give us understanding, that we would bring heaven to earth through the plans and the purposes that you establish in this county. Lord, I pray that your will will be done in this place this morning. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Please follow in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Alright, at this time we'll entertain a motion to adopt the order of the agenda.
Based on the information before us, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment on the, uh, motion on the table? Seeing none, deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Alright, consent agenda. We have some big-ticket items here. Sheriff's Office has three, four confidential items. One for seventy-eight thousand eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. It was approved by auditing. It's a software purchase. Another software purchase at eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. It was also approved by auditing. And then a third software purchase in the amount of sixty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Their fourth item is, it says Cook's. It's the purchase of a convection oven for the detention at eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. We have two confidential items from technology. One is Google Workspace Renewal for ninety-four thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-two cents. The second item is a two-factor authentication hardware, twenty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. And then Elections has Heart Interactive for six thousand dollars. So those are the big-ticket items on our consent agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on the consent agenda? Seeing none, deliberation by the board?
Evidently, we should have been software programmers.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, next up is Clerk Rosedale.
Morning Commissioners, good morning, everybody. Before you, I have fiscal year twenty-five claims batch number fifty totaling three hundred and five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. The biggest ticket items on this claims batch are sixty thousand for Roden Bridge tires, twenty-two thousand for Roden Bridge, Bridge Maintenance, and thirty-five thousand for Roden Bridge Heavy Equipment. Everything else is smaller.
Does the board have any questions for the clerk before we entertain a motion? Alright, at this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding FY twenty-five claims batch number fifty.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of FY twenty-five claims in batch number fifty totaling three hundred and five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, next item.
Okay, the next item is Idaho Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Professional Grant, and Jessica's going to present that, except Jessica, in fact, is not online. But we have people from that group here, don't we?
I'd like to answer any questions.
So how about we just read the background on this, and if the board has, has questions? Do you want?
Would you do that, please? Because Jessica has all the paperwork.
No worries. Alright, uh, background. Bonner County has been awarded a Rural Idaho Economic Development Professional Grant from the Idaho Department of Commerce in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. This grant is designed to support economic development services in rural communities through locally-based programming. The PONDRA Economic Partnership will serve as the county's local economic development organization under this program. The grant funding will be used to support professional services and activities with the Economic Development Program Work Plan. Required grant match is eight thousand dollars provided by PONDRA Economic Partnership. The county obligation is none. Bonner County has no financial responsibility for providing the matching funds. Administration, this grant is a pass-through grant administered by Bonner County on behalf of POEP. Funds will be dispersed in accordance with Idaho Department of Commerce requirements with POEP responsible for the local match project execution and reporting. The county's role is limited to administering the grant. There is no fiscal impact to the county funds. And so this is not uncommon when people sometimes need grants within the county, that the individual can't request the grants, but it has to be a pass-through. And so we have done this for, um, this group before in the past. Um, and this is actually significantly more, because usually it's about five thousand where we've seen grants. So with that, do we want, did you want to say anything?
Only if anybody has any questions.
Okay. Does the board have any questions before we entertain a motion?
I do.
Jessica, can you put yourself on mute now? Thank you.
Could you explain a little bit more about what this group does?
Certainly.
Brent, can you say anything?
Brent Baker, Bonner County resident, executive director of the PONDRA Economic Partnership. So it's the, it's the official economic development organization. We're a nonprofit founded in the year two thousand, so we've been doing this for twenty-five years now for the county. And the, uh, there, the northern economic district of the state, I believe there's six total districts in the state, we're the northernmost, which are the five northern counties. Each county has an economic development office, and at the center of that is Panhandle Area Council, which is the official organization for the district. And we do the local work within each county. We're the local representative that can help connect people to resources and run programs. So we do, uh, free, uh, business counseling for veterans. We connect people with grants. We help people understand what the state programs are in terms of incentives, uh, for the business community. So really, we oversee the entire, you know, economic health, if you will, of the county. And we collaborate with, uh, Department of Commerce and at the federal level, like the EDA has no offices here. The nearest Economic Development Agency office is in Seattle. So there's no connection to our community, but we pay, everybody here pays federal dollars in grants. We need proper, fair access to get our fair share back to our county from the tax dollars that goes out. So our office serves as the local representative to help, you know, get that money coming back to us. If we don't, it just goes elsewhere. So that, that's basically what we do. We also work with all the nonprofits, uh, in the community and, uh, the educational organizations, et cetera. So it's community and economic development support.
And you do do a summit that invites all of elected officials and members of the community to hear about what they do as well.
And that's Thursday of this week, so if I, I can get, uh...
Your plug?
I thought, yeah, I thought...
Get more of the plug for Thursday, you didn't mention it, so...
So I'll, uh, but now that you all asked and that you mentioned, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, that's this Thursday, so, and there's still seats available for that. I can get, I'll get some out to the Commissioner. I think Asia, you probably got one, you're on our mailing list. But I'll get, make sure everybody's received that. In case any of you can make it, we'd love to have you there.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
Yeah, the eight thousand dollar match, does that come from your organization?
Uh, that comes from, uh, our business members. That, so we get the average, just a little more background, I don't want to take too much time, I know you always have a very full agenda, but the average, uh, Rural Economic Development Office in the state of Idaho gets forty-four percent of its funding from the county and the municipalities within that county, and the rest comes from, typically from the business community and sometimes, uh, some grants, but usually the business community. Last year, we received, received zero from, from the county or from any municipality. So our funding started to dry up. So right now, it's a hundred percent dependent. All the matches are one hundred percent dependent right now on our business members making contributions.
Thank you.
Makes it tough.
It does.
Okay, and also, I'd just like to mention, if I could, since I'm up here, is that I'd like an opportunity sometime, planning in advance, I'd love to do, I know you hold lots of informational workshops where people learn about what's going on, so they can plan ahead for following budget cycles way in advance. I'd like to present, like, who we are and what we do. Some of that'll be happening at the summit, but I'd like to, for the county, have the county have its own, I'd be happy to come make a presentation sometime in the future so people can understand who we are and what we really do.
I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything further? Alright, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash sixty in support of the FY twenty-six Idaho Department of Commerce ED PRO Grant. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident, is it open to the public? And if so, what time and location?
I told you to say time and location.
Yes, it's, uh, Thursday all day. Registration starts, uh, signing starts at eight-thirty. We get going at nine fifteen, and it goes till everybody leaves, typically around five or five-thirty, the...
Is it still at NIC extension?
Uh, no, we've moved it. It's going to be in town. We, again, because our budget's so tight, we were offered, uh, the space at no cost and with no extra special insurance, et cetera. So we were able to do it much more affordably at the, uh, Sandpoint Center, Marigold Cafe facility there, the, the bank building. Now Columbia again.
So tell Wayne the time and where can he sign up on your website?
Uh, yeah, you can sign up, the website is, uh, P E P Idaho dot org. Uh, you can sign up there and register there. Uh, we started about, uh, like I say, nine fifteen, registration starts at eight-thirty. Uh, the last formal presentation will be done at four, four fifteen, and then people, uh, hang out and just network through to the end and visit. As long as they like. Thursday.
Is there a fee for that event?
Uh, yes, it costs eighty-nine dollars and includes, uh, a light continental breakfast, uh, coffee, juices, snacks all day long, and a sit-down hot lunch, plus all, all the speakers for events during the course of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any further public comment on this item? Alright, seeing none, deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Are you going to be Elections too?
I'm Elections too, yes.
Usually, she didn't come up.
Every once in a while, we have an election with a carve-out of certain precinct where almost nobody is involved in voting. Uh, this is such a case, Idaho Code, uh, thirty-four, three oh eight allows us to designate for that election only that it's a male-only precinct, if there are under a hundred and forty voters. That way, we don't have to gear up all the election, uh, volunteers that we pay, rent the facility from, and they don't have to be there from seven in the morning till basically eight-thirty at night. Um, we have thirteen voters in Le Cleed. So we have the approval from the Secretary of State to make Le Cleed a voter, a male-only precinct for this election only, and that's what we're asking you to approve.
Does the board have any questions before we entertain a motion? Alright, at this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding Elections.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash sixty-one, designating the Le Cleed precinct as a mail ballot precinct for the November four, twenty-twenty-five election due to there being only thirteen eligible voters for this election. After November's election, Le Cleed will revert back to regular precinct status.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Alright, SIR liability. So Christian, before you walk past, do you want to give it to those guys? That way they can pass the mic, and then you can be at that one? Because they might have some input there. So we have with us our broker from Redmond.
Good morning Commissioners, Christian Jocelyn, Risk Manager for the record. And we have our, uh, broker here, the Redmond team. We have Nicole, Jordan, and Conrad right back there. So any specific questions, too, uh, that could be available for extra questions? And the first item I have here is for our SIR insurance renewal. We do this every, uh, beginning of the fiscal year again. We worked closely with, uh, Redmond, they really, uh, helped with the renewal here. The cost of the renewal is seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and includes casualty, crime, aviation, auto, inmate medical, which we'll discuss later here, cyber, equipment breakdown, inland marine, and then TRIA, and the TPA, the third-party administrator claim handler. Obsidian specialty, you can see it all there, G A I C, crime, STAR Aviation, inland, uh, marine, and mobile equipment, Liberty Special Equipment, and Liberty Special Terrorism. Those invoices we paid through Redmond, and you can see it down lower, the Coalition, cyber, the inmate medical, and the TPA, we paid directly. So that shouldn't affect here, I'm just, I'm getting approval for the whole package or any changes you want to do. Then, I have a couple comments, if I can make a couple comments before we go further. Um, this is a very difficult, uh, insurance market out there. I don't know if the public knows it too, but, uh, insurance is increasing in cost greatly. And, um, um, this, uh, this, um, cost here, sorry, at the seven thirty-nine, four fifty-two is a huge, uh, success we've had. We actually budgeted, and I think, odd things here, we budgeted a million just for, uh, potential increases due to the nature of this market, and, um, the number came in at the seven thirty-eight, so a saving of almost three hundred thousand based on our expectations what would happen. So the Redmond team was key with that success. And I have a few more comments I can make. Cyber, we're increasing, uh, our coverage for cyber from one million to three million of coverage, or proposing it if the Commissioners agree. We've been, our IT team, our technology team has, uh, successfully kept us, uh, free of problems that way, you know, knock on wood. But that is a big hazard. Everything I see in the news is, uh, um, it's pretty devastating to have that, uh, type of issue, and a lot of our surrounding cities in other counties nearby have had problems with this. It's really devastating, so we think that's prudent to increase that to three million. Um, also, a slight difference is this obsidian policy, uh, adjusts each coverage up to ten million each, so we don't need a separate excess policy. Normally, each one is like a million or so, and then you have a ten million excess, each individual line is a ten, it's kind of interesting. And the next item I have is the inmate medical. What that basically is, is it's about twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six as part of this package. We've had it for the last five, six years. It, uh, basically, they do two things. One is they have insurance for any inmate, if they have a medical bills for the whole year, over fifty thousand, they cover it. And they also have a service where they can review billing and adjust it. She sends the bill to them, they adjust it down for the Medicaid rates, um, which we pay for inmates in Idaho, which is a lot cheaper than normal rates. Um, I did an investigation, um, with, uh, Sheriff's Office, and it seems like they do have software now, and they've had training from our in-house employee that deals with a lot of medical bills for health insurance. And I'm pretty satisfied, um, they have a good system in place to evaluate bills in-house. But, um, one question I do have for Commissioners is, our choices are, we can decline the inmate medical, save the twenty-two thousand, but then we're at risk of any bills over fifty thousand, which could happen easily. Or we accept the inmate medical, you know, pay the twenty-two thousand, it limits our risk to fifty thousand per inmate per year. And the final choice is, um, we have not used the inmate medical billing review service. They tried to use it from the Sheriff's Office way back when, uh, we first started buying it, like in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen or so. But I'm pretty satisfied with talking to our in-house, uh, employee in HR and the Sheriff's Office, uh, that, um, they have a pretty good system in place to evaluate those bills. So, um, what my risk comes down to, I recommend buying the insurance, but we can continue handling bills in-house instead, until they hit the fifty, instead of sending them in. Now, that's really part of the decision here, but I just wanted to share that with you for commentary. And I have a few more comments here, sorry to hit you so much. Oh, just real quick on SIR is for the public here. It's self-insured retention. We had made this change many years back, and the basic concept is a deductible program, the insurance handles the defense from day one, and then they charge you back what your deductible is. With an SIR, we handle, uh, with our legal team, I saw them here someplace, um, they handle in-house all the defense and whether to fight something or pay. And the decision was made by a previous board, I think it's been a good decision, is with the SIR, we know the community best, we have the relationships, and it gives, uh, more control to the Commissioners on handling, uh, uh, claims and, uh, and risk. And we've had very, especially the last couple of years, very successful with the elected and the board reducing risks. We've had some claims in the past, but I think our processes are getting better with controlling that. But the whole key to SIR is that you have good processes to avoid claims. And the reason is, with a deductible program, in the short run, you save by having deductible if you have a poor risk management system, be paid for it in the long run, so future boards would have higher and higher insurance costs. So the, the philosophy we have so far here is handle it in-house and control risk has been very successful for us. Insurance is a, a big deal in a negative way for a lot of, um, homeowners and other businesses where the costs are going high. We've managed to hold off on that. And then, I think I have one more items. Part of that, what I recommend, uh, for the future going forward, and this is not really a decision thing, but just to share my, um, background here, is we should continue to strengthen our employee training, um, you know, orientation and the annual training. So I'll probably do the same sheets again we do every year, showing each department, uh, their losses for the last year and recommendations. We should increase site visits, um, for safety, for property angle. Strengthen our post-incident review and root cause analysis for claims, because again, we're basically self-insuring for the first five hundred, so we need to really, uh, control losses. And then, I, I request that we continue the policy, we'll risk as the opportunity to review all, um, proposed memos, resolutions for the risk aspects, so please keep that going, that's good. And, uh, my goal too is to increase transparency of claims and losses, so I want to give, um, we're looking at software to have more, uh, real-time dashboards for the elected department heads and even the community, so they can kind of see how we're trending on things. And then finally, oh yeah, the, the law sheets I'll do every year too. And, um, that's all I have on this part. Then I have some other comments for property insurance, but that's all my commentary. And Redmond is here, that's our broker, who's really had a huge success this year. We thought we would have a huge hit, uh, to our budget. I think our increase here, I can't remember what it was, it was like thirteen percent higher than before, I wrote it down someplace, we had thirteen percent more than last year, which seems like a lot, but, um, based on what's going on out there, um, that's a huge, uh, potential hit to our budget. That's all I have.
Thank you. So before we do a motion, I wanted to say thank you to Redmond, because we did change some things, and one of the big changes that we did was we started working on insurance , uh, well before, uh, which is usual and typical in the industry, because we wanted to get closer to a real number so that in our Clerk's Office, when we were doing our budget, because we do it a little bit faster, that we had a more realistic understanding of what would cost, and knowing that if it were lower, and in this case, it's coming out lower, but it's not negative to what we actually worked on. So we recognize that that was you guys actually shifting to what our county wanted done in terms, and that was a big deal, because we did have to go back and forth with Redmond on taking different looks and different approaches to address the fact that on some of these lines, that thirteen percent increase is actually reflecting that we actually bought more insurance this go-around than we did the last time, especially with cybersecurity, recognizing the trend that's in that industry. And that comes from a lot of the counsel that Redmond does give us when we're in that process. So that open dialogue, um, is absolutely beneficial. Um, I just want to hit on that a lot of people, when they hear self-insurance, it's not that we don't have insurance, it's just our SIR is five hundred thousand dollars. So we are, our job is to mitigate the risks associated with that. We do have insurance. So, um, I think there's got to be more education in our community as a whole to understand what is... So I think there's got to be more education in our community as a whole to understand what is self-insured. It is, it is insurance. The other thing is when it comes to the sheriffs, the comment you made about the sheriff not using the claims management software, I think that should be a conversation to have, because I agree that Kevin is doing a good job. But there's a reason that you put it into a claims management software tool, because from a risk perspective, it allows us to do some tracking and trending of what types of claims, what potential training we could do, and what we would call like a near miss might be a potential. We don't see any of those things if what we're just doing is looking at a claim. And so that was one of the reasons I requested that, not just on the sheriff's side, but on the county side as a whole, that we look at a claims management software, not just currently, we do it as like an Excel spreadsheet and you're tracking it. But it doesn't allow for us to do a real complete claim review if you're going to be self-insured. There's software that allows me to identify a claim and then identify who are the people that I need to get information from, and it keeps it in that section, and it allows us to then take all of that data when we're shopping for insurance. Also to say, we're doing a good job of managing and having eyes on what we're doing. And I think that's one of the next steps that we need to take. But I think that the increase, when people hear 13%, there needs to be that qualifying statement, as we did buy more than what we were thinking we were going to buy, and cybersecurity changed a lot. And I think it's, it's going to continue to change, but I think we bought twice as much this go-around that we, as we did last time. But I'd like us to have the conversations on using the software when we're, because that's in part what we're paying for when we buy. And that means that we would be able to free up a staff member to do other things for the county, since we're paying a software to do the claims management piece of it. And it might do for a better flow. So I think we should have that conversation. One of the things that we're also changing on being self-insured is increasing our claims management discussions on all lines, so that it's not just that we send it over to our third-party administrator to look at a claim, but that Christian and myself and the insurance carrier and sometimes legal are in the same room going over, how do we manage these claims? Because for some types of insurance, your rating increases just based on the amount of time a claim is open in different lines. And so bringing things to resolutions faster is also something that we're working on as we develop some internal risk control processes for the county as a whole. So that's a lot of work. And so thank you to Christian for working on it, and to, Kevin has been working on, over in HR, aspects of risk as well, so that we can build a true program that we can depend on, because we kind of shift a little bit. We don't always do RCAs on events that occur, which means we're not catching near misses that impact our costs. So I think we're headed in a right direction, but a big thank you to everybody for letting us do this early, because we did do it early, and I think the clerk's office was very happy that we got it, got that part done early, and that it didn't come over, it came in under, which was a lot of effort, especially when we were doing stopgap. So that was a big, I know that was like, where are we at with stopgap? And you're like, we're still working on it, but you guys got it done, so I appreciate that. So does Redmond want to say anything before we go into a motion on this? Or introducing the faces? I'm not sure.
Yeah. Thank you Commissioners. My name is Jordan Redmond. This is Nicole Wilson, who is the primary account representative on this, and kudos really go to her. She did an excellent job. And in the collaboration with the county, I think we feel really comfortable with this portfolio. I will mention too, on the inmate medical, it sounds like the Sheriff's Department is doing an excellent job managing those. However, with the inmate medical, they also do that claims review, and if they find any savings, you return, that money's returned to you, right? So if we do find an improper payment in any way, that money is returned to the county, so it can be a real benefit there if you want them to review the claims, which is at no cost with the inmate medical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you got to introduce him too.
Oh, sorry. And this is also Dave Miller. Dave Miller does a lot of community development for us in northern Idaho, and he's an excellent member of Redmond Insurance.
He just sat his roll back.
He did, yeah. I almost forgot about him.
Okay. Does the board have any questions before we entertain a motion on this item?
I do. So looking at the equipment breakdown sheet under our casualty, it looks like we're paying an additional $48,000 for an attorney working overseas. Is that correct?
Oh, for equipment, no. I believe, and Nicole, correct me, I believe with the new insurance, for the old one, it'd be an extra cost. With this proposed obsidian, it'd be included, I believe, or correct me though.
Yeah, with, obsidian did agree to carve out coverage for the attorney working overseas to accommodate that, as well as the sheriff's drone.
Oh yeah.
Those were two items that we noticed when we were, that in the original review, that there was no insurance coverage for the usage of drones. So that was one of the things we had to go back on.
And was that $48,000 in addition to cover those two carve-outs?
No, there's no additional cost.
Where do you see the 48 maybe?
I'm sight hustling here. I think what you're looking at is just the breakdown of a policy, not that they didn't add to it, is what the.
On the top left corner, it says equipment breakdown. And under the casualty, which is our first line, has $493,587, and then the right column has a $541,111, and it says includes customs. So I just was wanting clarification on that.
Sorry, those are the 20, 24 to 25 renewal numbers. So that was last year. We had to take the header off to fit all of our stuff on there. So that was, the first column is what the program looked like last year, just so you can see what, how it changed.
So then do we have a breakdown or not available today as far as what our additional costs were on the drone and the?
They carved out the coverage.
No additional.
There was no additional cost.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
For the benefit of the community, since we're in a public meeting, this is always helpful, even though the board's gone back and forth with you guys over this, which we appreciate, could you please state if these coverage amounts aren't aligned with your recommendations, given the type of liability we have as a county?
Yes, these are, based on our previous discussions and working with Christian, the program meets the needs that have been, as they have been presented to us.
Can I add to that too, Ron? Or, sorry, Brian? One thing that we do decide every year, and you can let us know for the next year, is the 500 SIR is not a magic number. So the board definitely can reduce that risk and bring a lower number, or go traditional deductible program. But that is a great question, but based on what we asked Redmond for was the 500.
And if I might add, thank you Commissioner Domke. I think the biggest change that we saw was, again, Commissioner Williams mentioned, was increasing that cyber liability limit. And I think that's something that we're seeing across the country, and we're not, we're seeing it here in Idaho as well. We have a number of municipalities that have had cyber attacks, and so I think that was the biggest increase that we saw, as well as we have that internal limit of 10 million on the casualty, instead of having an excess line of coverage. So this is in line with what we believe is the best recommendation for the county.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Corn.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve purchase of obsidian SIR liability insurance and the other policies described in this memo.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, further deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes? Yes.
Yes.
I have another item.
Were you guys wanting to leave with this all signed? So can I give you this, and we can ask Veronica to stamp it, because that's a lot of signatures as well. So you guys don't have to wait?
Actually, that's the same packet you have, of course, submitted weeks ago. It's just flagged to know where to sign.
So Jordan, if you want to walk through, Veronica's in there, she can stamp it all, and you guys don't have to wait, because this is a long meeting today.
Yeah.
All right. Property insurance.
Okay, go ahead. So the second item I have for you Commissioners is renewing our property insurance for the year. And we've had Farm Bureau for about a year and a half now, and this is continuing the same policy basically, but the cost has gone down. So the cost of this renewal is $238,975. I have a note on this. Last year was $246,728. And basically the same property list on there. Just to alert you, we still have all the properties that potentially could be EMS on our list, because it appears we are the owners of those properties anyway. But this number would go down if down the road you had me take things off our list. But right now, I'm still insuring entire county. I've not carved out the EMS.
So my only comment on property, like not in terms of property insurance, is there's some lists of properties that we need to consider. Why does the county own these? Because we're covering insurance, but we're not in control on some of them, and it's come up a few times. And I think this, by the next renewal, we need to address why the county has some property that we aren't really using or we're handing over to other people to use, but we're paying the property insurance premium. We kind of dealt with that a little bit when the Priest River Community Center came up, and then it was handed over to us, and then we gave it back to them. But there's more than that out there. And we need to make sure that we are only insuring what we're actually, should be insuring in some of the buildings we've already identified as. We don't know why we still own some of those.
He lost off his grandfather in the past. It's a smart idea. I can do that. I can shore a view. And this is not the vacant land, but things with improved property on it.
We brought up the comment about like the Blue Lake Senior Center a few times, where the other senior centers are within that community, but on like that one, we pay the insurance and everything that goes wrong with it. We do use it for a polling place, but does that mean we own it? We need to kind of clearly go through the list of property that we're insuring, because property insurance fluctuates too.
That plus, and utilities we pay for and everything, so it has a lot of fees.
Yes. Yeah, there are a lot of fees that come with that. So that's my only comment on properties. We need to go through a list, and then we need to address the ownership of the ambulance district buildings. Any further comments or questions to Christian before we entertain a motion? All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion on this item.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve purchase of property insurance from Farm Bureau.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this one?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident. You mentioned that there was a decrease.
Yeah.
What percentage decreased currently?
I'll do a quick guess, if that's okay. It was, let's see what I had here. It was 246, it went to 238, so about, let's say, 10,000 less, so 5%. And I'm somebody who's good with math, but, oh yeah, I'll put you on 246 minus 238, probably 5% or so.
And we dropped, we dropped off some buildings as well. So we have a, we have buildings that were not on this policy. Any further public comment? All right. Deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. Sheriff. Under Sheriff.
Morning Commissioners. Roar Lakeold, Bonner County Sheriff's Office for the record. I have a lot, I think, on this agenda, and I think I'm going through them as it's listed on the agenda. So we'll start with the confidential lease agreement. The Bonner County Sheriff's Office would like to enter a five-year lease agreement. This lease would provide floor space in the building and space on the tower. The cost is $2,015.84 with a 3% annual increase thereafter. There are sufficient funds in our 00824 Sheriff's Office repeater budget to cover this lease.
All right. Does the board have any questions?
Not specifically. Have you, has the Sheriff's Office looked into actually maybe building their own building up there so that we can get out of lease agreements, or is there not any more land available up there?
I know that the thought is entertained as frequently as we can. A lot of it has to do with property ownership, and so different locations will have different property ownership and different space availability. And so there was a, there was communication, I think, at some point to take over somebody else's property, not take over, but purchase their property. So we had our own space in one particular spot. And I guess I can, I can make it short, is we continue to entertain it, and that would be certainly a goal. It hasn't become available at this point to, at a reasonable level.
Thanks.
All right. Any further questions? All right. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
Based on the information before us, I move to accept the tower site lease agreement. I further move for the Chairwoman to sign the agreement administratively.
A motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes. Next up is Kootenay Tribe.
So, excuse me. The Kootenay Tribe of Idaho is entering into an agreement with the Bonner County Sheriff's Office to house their male and female inmates at the Bonner County Detention Center in accordance with Idaho Code Title 20 and Rules and Regulations of the Idaho Jail Standards. The tribe will reimburse Bonner County $125 per day for each inmate housed in the detention facility. This agreement will be in effect from the date of execution of all parties until November 20th, 2026, and may be terminated by either party with at least 30 days. With at least 30 days. The only change from the previous year is the dates and cost per day. In the past, it was $90 per day.
All right. Any questions on this item?
This is my standard question when it comes to these agreements. Do we know if the rate being charged is equal to or greater than our cost?
It's, it's getting closer to our cost. I don't know exactly what our daily rate is at the moment, but it certainly is more consistent with 125 a day than it is 90 a day. And so it's, it's quite a matrix to get the cost per day. It's, you know, staff, power, you know, infrastructure, the whole shot, and then divided by our number of inmates for the year's period of time. And so when our fluctuation of housing is down, like actually, we're, you know, we're tracking in the 90s, 80s, 90s right now, and so, which of that will make the, the hard cost per day go up. And so again, a short answer is, is it's getting closer. It might be a little bit north of that for an actual cost, but it is definitely more in line with what our actual daily cost is. I'll also include taking an inmate in and making the $125 per day. It literally only costs us, you know, $5 to $10 a day to have that person there. So the only thing we're paying while they're there is just the food cost. So, because we got to keep the building heated, we got to keep the, you know, the staff there, we got to keep the infrastructure going, and so.
You're saying, yeah, you're saying the other overhead cost is already baked in, so regardless of whether or not, or as long as we have capacity, regardless of whether we're housing more or less, the base cost remains the same.
Correct.
I want to say at the conference, I believe they said kind of the average day per inmate, because this came up in one of those meetings, it's a blur. It was around 135 was an average across. And so it's, I think that, I think where Commissioner Domke was headed is we want to do our best to be closer to what it costs us, because in as much as we say that there's lights and all that already needed, the buildings need to be repaired and staffing. We want to be closer to what it costs us, because if we're close to maximum capacity, this agreement still has you taking in a person.
We don't, we aren't bound to take anybody in if we're at our maximum capacity. We won't.
If you're close to maximum capacity.
Right. And then we can call them up if we get, if, we won't turn away a local inmate to make sure that we're housing someone else's inmate. But I, I agree, and we do agree. That's why we have moved the cost up to 125, which was, is more consistent with, with getting closer to the, to the daily rate.
All right. Any further questions?
Along those same lines, why, why didn't we just go ahead and go to 135, to where we would be more, more in line, instead of still behind the eight ball, if you will?
I, I, I'm only guessing that we picked 125, because that was what our daily rate was for Bonner County at the time. So there's the state day, so averaging through the state, everybody's going to have a different daily rate cost, and so that would be what an average would be. And so moving forward, we'll, you know, go consistent with either the state or, or ours. We certainly don't, they don't mind paying, we don't mind charging.
Something to look at next year.
Certainly.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the adult detention agreement between the Kootenay Tribe of Idaho and Bonner County to house male and female inmates at the Bonner County Detention Facility. The tribe will reimburse Bonner County $125 per day per inmate, with the agreement being effective from date of execution until November 30, 2026.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Next item is Bonner County Sheriff's Office Jail is requesting authorization to purchase electrical service from Dynamic Electrical for the total of $9,500. These services will include the following. Install four outlets, main bay on two circuits. Install two outlets, back bay. Mount six plug-in cord reels with caddy beam clamps. Refeed five outlets on two circuits due to bench obstruction. Install 50 amp 120 slash 240 volt circuit and three-quarter EMT with 25 foot eight by four S O O W drop cord. We have the funds to cover this purchase in the Bonner County Sheriff's Repair Maintenance Buildings Funds Budget. This is for, for fiscal '26.
All right. Does the board have any questions?
Could you just give us a little bit of an idea of why these new power needs have come up?
I would love to. And I would be happy to schedule this at a later date if need be. I, when I, when I saw this one on here, I didn't have these, those questions answered. So I apologize for that.
I just think it'd be helpful to understand. I don't think it's an unreasonable.
I don't, I don't believe it is either.
I just don't understand where the, what the need is that's driving it. And that's the only reason I ask is if you already have that information today.
As I was reading through it, I wished, I was wishing that, that I had. I can either finish these ones, step out and, and find out. And we can, you can postpone this one or we can schedule it for next week and I will come better prepared to answer that question. You can either do your, your, your call.
I personally would like to know what the project is because I, I think this board has been trying to transition to people planning for the projects and seeing what we're working on. This very reasonably might be related to something we just don't know. So I would like to just have it, what we're paying for and then voting on it. Because this one, it just tells me.
Bunch of outlets, bunch of electrical work.
Is there a problem at the jail? Is there something wrong? Or is it related to the roof or the wall? We don't know. So there's just so many things that could be. I just don't. I would like to know more about this one.
The only question is, would you want to table it for a later point in this meeting? Or do you want to deny it? And then I'll bring it back next week, whatever you, whatever you.
I, I would think that this meeting is long enough today that you have time to step out and come back on it. Because if this has been something that the project has been, you've got like the time and date this person is going to come out and do the work. I don't want to interrupt it. It just doesn't say what this is for.
Yep.
So let's, we don't need to do a motion on it. We'll just bring it back. We'll just go to your next item and then we will circle back to it.
Okay. So commissioners, this next one, this is for this upcoming year. And this is, so Bill Wilson and I discussed this prior to coming to the board. And he suggested it come this way. So because Tahos are very difficult to get right now. And this is for a jail Tahoe. We're basically requesting permission to order a jail Tahoe and then purchase it when it, when it comes in. And we have the quote. So Bonner County Sheriff's Office would like to purchase a 2026 Chevy Tahoe in the amount of $56,811.36 from Taylor &amp; Sons Chevrolet. The new Tahoe being purchased on state bid pricing will be used for transporting inmates primarily over long distances. The Bonner County Sheriff's Office has adequate funds in fiscal '26 year. And the funding number is 03461-7040. Sheriff Detention Vehicles accounts to purchase this vehicle. Additionally attached is an agreement from Taylor &amp; Sons that they'll provide that specific vehicle at that specific price. And then we actually built in a, a timeline that if they don't provide that by September of 2026, that gives us the option to try to source another vehicle and purchase it with the fiscal '26 funds. So the agreement that we're asking for today is to preauthorize ordering this vehicle at that price to be purchased in the 2026 fiscal cycle.
I have some questions for you.
Certainly.
How many new vehicles does the sheriff's department need? And then on this one, I might be recalling this incorrectly. So you correct me on this, that we had a discussion when we were buying trucks. And the comment was that the truck was really better than the Tahoe. There was some discussion on kind of the mileage was the same, but overall for what the sheriff needed, that it was the truck. And I thought in that arena, we were done with vehicle purchases once we did that meeting. And so I'm not, and I understand this is different because it's a transport, but I thought one of the vehicles that we weren't going to be using for much travel was the vehicle that was going to transport inmates. But we did so many vehicles that I kind of would like a kind of summary on how many more are you looking for? Are you looking for trucks and Tahos and kind of what we should expect? Because the future vision of vehicles, it's coming up when you guys find them. But I'd, I'd like to know how many are you looking for? How many are we replacing?
This, this particular vehicle is the jail transport vehicle. And so it's, it'll be out of the, just for, and we, this, we discussed this at budget time and got approval for this. And this will be replacing, I think it's got 260 or 70,000 miles on it, a Suburban. And so the Suburban, while it was nice to have the third row seating, we never actually used the third row seating. So a Tahoe is fantastic for all your round, especially some of the longer distance jail inmate transports. And so where, and then so for a jail specific use, a Tahoe is definitely a better fit. It doesn't need the additional ground clearance. They have the additional inside space because they, you know, when we're transporting a prisoner to somewhere else, we have their stuff that has to go with them. And so it's nicer to just have it in the back. And so we have a screen, you know, cage in the back, the seated area, which is caged in, and then the driver's compartment. And so we're only asking for the one for, and this is the first new vehicle for the jail that I can think of in the last several years anyway. And then for patrol use, yes, we are specifically trying to stick with trucks because we're identifying that those are actually a better fit, especially for some of our county roads that Roden Bridge does a fantastic job of keeping up with and weather does a fantastic job of trying to destroy them. So the trucks have been working great as far as the ground clearance and, and the storage, the guys are, are getting really comfortable with how they're able to keep their gear and store it. And it's, and it's safe and secure in the back of those.
So no more vehicles would be needed for the jail after this purchase?
Not this year. No, not this, not this fiscal '26 year, no.
And then patrol, I know this is not.
So fiscal '26 patrol, we're, we're shooting for three to four new trucks again to backfill just outgoing, you know, once they've used their service life to backfill those.
Okay. Thank you. And I wanted to ask only because I know we've talked about vehicles enough that I'm sure people are saying, didn't we just buy one? Didn't we just buy one? So thank you for clarifying.
We bought one and then we had to buy another one that was on the first list. And so it's been on the agenda several times lately.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
So we, we recognize the fact that patrol needs more vehicles. And I remember that discussion too, as far as you're trying to get four new vehicles per year on a rotational basis for patrol. Is it possible to get, you said, three or four? Is it possible that we can get four of those trucks this year for patrol and then take one of those, what are they? Tahos? Because that's what you're using now for patrol, right? Take one of those Tahos and dedicate that to the jail and try and help out patrol a little bit more?
In a, in a best case scenario, that would, the Tahos that we have, one, basically when we're done with them, they're well over the 200,000 mile mark. And so we're, we're pushing them to the absolute limits of, of, in fact, you know, we, we try to find that balance of repair versus replace. And we're, 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 we're pushing that envelope as far as we can, as far as, you know, keeping them, keeping them going. So I, while I agree with the, the concept of that, it would, if, if patrol was staying with, with Tahos, that would, that would be great. But the jail puts on a fair amount of miles as well. And so they'll, they'll have miles on that new Tahoe. I mean, they, they, they're on the road almost every day.
Any further questions?
No.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding the 2026 Chevrolet Tahoe.
Do not have their motion.
I don't think there was a proposed. Would you like me to make one up on the floor?
Sure. Oh, maybe. Well, let me look at the, no, I guess there's not.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the purchase of a 2026 Chevrolet Tahoe in the amount of $56,811.36 from Taylor &amp; Sons Chevrolet for fiscal year '26.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item?
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident. Will that include all of the internal items that you need?
No, sir.
On it? Or would you be taking those items off of the current jail vehicle and putting them on the new vehicle?
Yes. Two, two questions. First question is, no, that does not include anything. That's just the vehicle out the door to us. And then additionally, so what we can use out of what we, what we down, we always are able to use. Sometimes the body's style changes enough where we can't use the internal cages. Well, we'll have to buy new cages. But the radio equipment typically transfers over and a fair amount of the equipment does. And certainly we use everything that we can before we purchase, purchase new stuff.
Any further comment? All right. Deliberation by the board. Rule call vote. Yes.
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 All right. Motion passes.
All right, commissioners. This is a rather uncomfortable one. So a couple of weeks ago, we came, I came before you, actually via Zoom, I believe, and requested some work to be done to get us a drain system from our, it's, we call it the outdoor rec area. So it's the inmate outdoor rec area, but it's surrounded by cement walls, but it has an open ceiling to the elements. And so caged open ceiling, so people can't just jump out. But so rain and snow and et cetera that comes into that section has a drain. And certain times of year, the drain has been backing up. The board asked that we do some follow-up on checking for a PRT test or something similar. That was done and with, with good report. I had sent, I called Commissioner Corn, sent him a picture. They dug a fairly deep hole, dumped 300 gallons of water in it. It dissipated at a reasonable rate. When I took a picture of the hole a couple of days later, it was dry. And Commissioner Corn asked last week if he could just get a better look at it and stop by. And I encouraged him to do so. So on Friday, Commissioner Corn stopped by and found that the project was completed. So now I'm asking if we can pay for this project at the $9,845. Yes. Here I am under a bus.
Not you. You didn't fill the hole.
I didn't fill the hole. No.
All right.
I think Commissioner, Commissioner Corn can at least agree that it looks like it's going to work well. And, and they did a nice job and probably is going to sufficiently get rid of our water from here on out.
All right. So we don't really need to ask questions. So I can throw all those out.
Did you make Commissioner Corn's quality control inspection?
It did look good. I was surprised not to see a hole.
As surprised as I was.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the repaired.
Do you want me to make up the motion again?
Sure.
I think what you guys did was you just wrote and you printed yes or no, but you didn't give them the suggested motion.
Yeah, I noticed that on the other last two.
Can I, well, can I just ask you, did you do a follow-up? Because one of the questions was they had a qualifying. If this doesn't work, there was an additional thing that might be done. Did you get any feedback after?
Yeah, there's no, there's no expectation that anything else will need to be done on this. It looks more than sufficient. In fact, they also incorporated the old drain line as a, so if it ever reached the level of that line, then it will then drain into the original spot. Yeah. And it has a lid. And again, the, the fourth worst case scenario is if we had to pump it out, then it could be pumped out or you put a sump pump in it and just, because it's just, it's just rainwater and snow.
Okay. All right. All right. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
All right. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the authorization to repayment of excavation services from North Point Trenchless for a total of $9,845.0 for the jail facility.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none. Rule call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right.
All right. Two more, hopefully quick and easy ones. So the Bonner County Sheriff's Office provides law enforcement services on the county's lakes and rivers throughout the year. During the winter months, decrease, decreases in lake and river levels do not allow for the use of most current mortgage, mortgage locations. However, recreational activities continue on our waterways throughout the calendar year, and there is always a need to provide emergency services when necessary. Therefore, the Marine Division is seeking to enter into a temporary contract with Waterfront Property Management to retain mortgage space for a sheriff's vessel at Holiday Shores Marina in Hope from October 1st, 2025 to April 30th, 2026, as specified in the attached contract. Approval of this contract will allow for continual public safety services to the community on Lake Ponderay and along the Ponderay River. The cost of this rental agreement is $800, which is the same price as last year. The funds are available in the Marine Division account.
Any questions? All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the agreement with Waterfront Property Management and authorize the chairwoman to sign the attached contract.
Second. All right. There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none. Rule call vote.
Yes.
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 Last, will not last technically.
Almost.
Almost.
Last for the moment. The Bonner County Sheriff's Office provides law enforcement services on the county's lakes, rivers throughout the year. During the winter months, decreases in the lake and river levels do not allow for the use of most mortgage locations. However, recreational activities continue on our waterways throughout the calendar year, as well as the need to provide emergency services when necessary. Therefore, the Marine Division is seeking to enter into a short-term contract with McDonald's Resort to retain mortgage space for a sheriff's vessel at their marina in Bayview, effective October 1st, 2025 through April 30th, 2026, as specified on the attached contract. Approval of this contract will allow for continued public safety services to the community on Lake Ponderay and residents on the east, on the east side of the lake. The total cost of this rental agreement is $1,750. And the funds are available in the Marine Division account.
Any questions?
Is the more than double the cost from one to the other simply based on what location demands?
Yep. Location, yeah, location demands and yep, availability. So Bayview is always harder to get into. But it is a very strategic point to, to keep our, our boat just to cover that side of the lake, especially the Lakeview side. Because in winter months, that's one of our, even from a patrol standpoint, that's one of our avenues to access that side of the lake is by boat.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the agreement with McDonald's Resort and authorize the chairwoman to sign the attached contract.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this one? Seeing none deliberation by the board. Hearing none. Rule call vote. Yes.
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 Thank you. All right. Justice Services.
Morning, commissioners. Ron Spolz, Director of Justice Services for the record, have one item this morning. This is in terms of our fingerprint machine and software. It's recommended that the Board of Commissioners approve the Idemia, Identity and Security Maintenance Agreement addendum for the term of September 23rd, '25 until September 22nd of '26 at a cost of $150,000. at a cost of $157.42 per month, actual cost of $1,889 annually for maintenance services for the fingerprint computer and printer located in the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center. This has been approved by legal and auditing.
All right, any questions from the board before we entertain a motion?
Just for a little bit.
Did they round to the, for the total contract value? Because the math doesn't.
It, yeah, I think it's like four cents. I know I did the math too in the car when I got here. Because I looked at it, I think it's like, I think they rounded it because I think it was actually four cents over that amount, if you do the actual math.
They just rounded the total contract value down to the.
Yeah, down by four cents. Yeah.
It's a minor item, but it just didn't.
Right, yeah, it is, it is. The actual invoice indicates the 1,889 is the actual, actual real cost. Just background, this is the software equipment and the computer system that we do our fingerprinting with. The nice thing about it is, once those fingerprints are in, they automatically send them to the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, send them to all the places that needs to be electronically. With that being said, anything that is electronic and technology, it has software that's somewhat sensitive. And so there are times it fails. And so at that time, it's nice to have this agreement in place because then we're able to contact the folks that can fix it and get us back online pretty quickly.
Okay, any further questions? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the Idemia Addendum for the term of September 23rd, 2025 until September 22nd, 2026, as set forth above and previously approved by legal.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board. Hearing none, rule call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, commissioners.
Planning Department.
Morning, commissioners, members of the public. Alex Fain, interim planning director. So the first item we have on the agenda today is a request to transfer road vacations and the road validation processing to the Road and Bridge Department from the Planning Department. So road vacations and validations are processed under Idaho Code Title 40 and are not land use applications. Because these requests are governed solely by state statute, the county cannot adopt or amend local ordinances to change how these requests are governed solely by, or excuse me, amend local ordinances to change how they are administered. The noticing requirements, evaluation criteria, and decision making framework differ substantially from land use applications processed under the Local Land Use Planning Act. Additionally, these requests are not reviewed by the Planning or Zoning Commission for a recommendation before being presented to the Board of County Commissioners. Historically, the Planning Department has facilitated the processing of these requests. However, the analysis and recommendations relied upon by both the Planning Department and the B O C C have consistently come from the Road and Bridge Department. Given that Road and Bridge provides the technical expertise and operational knowledge required for these matters, they are better positioned to manage the entire process. The Planning Department recommends the board approve transferring the responsibility for processing road vacation and validation requests from the Planning Department to the Road and Bridge Department. This realignment will ensure that these applications are reviewed and administered by the department with direct jurisdictional expertise. So in the past five years, we've received, that would be 26 road vacation and validation requests from this, that have gone through our department and through the Board of County Commissioners.
Anything further from you?
Nothing further from me, unless you have any questions.
Director Top, do you want to weigh in? I see you're online.
Yeah, I thought, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I thought I'd weigh in because, one, the way I found out about this was kind of a snaky type move, in my opinion, that this was being brought forward. But you know me, I'm not the greatest with words. But regardless, if the board decides that they want to change this and put it under our department, then we're going to need to be looking at changing the job description to go along with it. They have one of our people doing it. It's outside the job description of my administration staff. We actually haven't changed in 20 years the amount of staff that we have in Road and Bridge. We have four people in this office, and we've been doing that for 20 years with the same amount of people. So not saying that we can't do these, I'm just saying that if you guys do recommend that we oversee the entire process of this, we're going to have to put one person in charge of it. And then we need to adjust their job descriptions accordingly and their pay accordingly to move forward with it. Planning staff has ultimately had the expertise and a lot of the people able to do these types of processes. I'm not somebody that says this isn't the way it's always been, that's why it has to be that way. So if the board decides they want to move forward with it, just know that I'll be coming forward with a job description change and a pay increase for one of my employees.
All right, thank you. Bill Wilson has a comment.
Thank you, commissioners. This is Bill Wilson for the record. And Alex, I didn't actually know this was on the agenda either. I guess I noticed it when I looked at it later last week. I think historically, the reason we've had these in the Planning Department is because planning staff has better or more experience with the noticing and of a public hearing and the way we conduct the public hearing. You're right that there is subject matter expertise that we rely on for the road staff there. But just to help the board understand why I think they've always been, although they are not subject to the same type of appeal under Lupa that we do see for most of our land use files, it's the procedural part of the public hearing process that we've kind of developed the expertise in at the planning level that we've then leveraged for this purpose. I think that's been the historical reason why it's been something that would ordinarily be in the Road and Bridge purview handled by planning staff.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
So I do. So I'm trying to figure out if this has been working for 20 years somewhat. I don't know how well, but why, why would we want to change? I'm not quite sure why the Planning Department still would not be in charge of it as Mr. Wilson has stated for noticing purposes and all. And then just refer back to Road and Bridge with specific questions that you might have.
So that's a great question. So currently, our planners handle and our staff handle the entire process. That comes from the noticing standards and noticing for the file, compiling the report, and then presenting it to the Board of County Commissioners. Like you said, we are not subject matter experts, and we rely heavily on Road and Bridge's expertise on this. So we are essentially acting as the vessel to present the information. But in reality, we don't have the capacity to answer the questions thoroughly. And Road and Bridge would be the ones answering the questions for you guys. I'm happy to show the Road and Bridge Department or to train them on how to notice for these hearings or how the procedure goes and how to conduct a public hearing. But it just has become a, it's become a file in our department that we basically have to reteach the entire staff how to run these and how to review these staff reports every time that we have a new road vacation. And like I said, we rely heavily on Road and Bridge, and that is the basis of most of our analysis in our staff report.
Can I ask you why this didn't go to the Road and Bridge Director, Legal and H R? Because you're asking for a shift, and I understand what your premise is. But the shift you're asking for impacts personnel from an H R perspective. It impacts Director Top's ability to absorb more functions, which is what he's describing, and then kind of a legal review of it before you bring it before the board, so that it's coming with that. Because there is a piece for each of those different departments to weigh in on, and it wasn't distributed to anybody.
So when we sent this to the commissioners, this, we included the auditing department, the risk department, and legal review in our, in our email to the board with this memo.
But H R, but I'm specifically naming the people that this impacts. So H R, Road and Bridge. Why didn't we ask them?
We brought this up to Road and Bridge, I believe, would have been about two weeks ago that we were moving forward with this. And I believe then Director Gabel had a conversation with Mr. Top. And I don't think that there is a clear resolution on who, on taking it over or not taking it over. This is the first I'm hearing of it impacting a job description or possibly a job classification. Mr. Top, I don't believe brought that up, but I was not there in the conversation with him and Director Gabel, so.
Any comment on H R?
We get so few of these requests throughout the years. I don't see how it wouldn't have to change a job description, but that's not my purview to. And we can, and we can evaluate this with H R, but that seems more appropriate if this, if this transfer of the process is, is approved by the board.
Because this conversation, it looks like from the date, happened in February, so it wasn't.
No, that, that was not, that's not correct. I believe that was just left in.
It says 2/7/25.
I understand. I believe that was left in the, in the memo when it was sent to the board. All the dates here, it was sent, I don't remember the exact date, but it would have been around two weeks ago, sent to those commissioners. And I don't believe that there is a, a thought of involving H R in this process.
So Bill, did you review this two weeks ago and give an answer?
Just checking with emails. It looks like there was a memo sent or an email sent on September the 9th saying, from Jake, saying, here's a memo requesting that the board move road vacation validation requests to the Road and Bridge Department. Please let me know if you have any concerns with the request. And I don't see, I'm just trying to do this off.
You're good.
I don't see any responses to it other than Alisa Schoffel saying, thank you, the next meeting is 9/23. So I don't know if there's been, I don't think I responded to that at the time.
And I have no record of responses from, from Bill or the risk or.
Does your email show that it went to Jason Top as well?
I don't mean to, I don't want to be 100%.
No, I get it.
Just to be on the phone like as we're to going, so I don't want to miss one, but I don't see that here.
I think that there's been valid comments made that, before reviewing this, that to get a response from legal and a response from the impact from H R and a response from Director Top and how it changed, because I understand what you're saying, that they're making a determination, but that that can be an interdepartment service that we're addressing. Because the bigger issue that I think Bill comments on is the reason it has existed there has to do with the noticing requirements that planning is the expert in. And maybe there's a change that needs to happen. Maybe it's this one, maybe there's something else. But I think there's a conversation with the current people that, that are missing from this discussion.
Yeah, I'd suggest that the part of the conversation with H R would probably be to understand that while the volume is a lot less, planning has a hearing coordinator position. Road and Bridge has nothing like that, and so that's something that needs to be considered to Director Top's comment made earlier. And so I do think that there is a potential impact there that would have to be considered from a duties, responsibilities, and training perspective. So that's paramount in my mind, the difference between a subject matter expert and the facilitation aspect of things. So, yeah, I think more discussion is more coordination.
All right, any further questions before we look at whether or not a motion is issued? All right, is there a motion on this item?
No, I'd like to see further coordination happen, as you've suggested, and see it brought back to the board after that coordination has been conducted.
Sure.
And I know, I know you inherited this, but I do think it would be prudent for that to occur.
Sure, yeah, I can set up a meeting with Director Top and H R.
Next item up.
So again, Alex Fain, interim planning director. So the memorandum I have before you is an appointment of the, of new planning commissioners. So the Bonner County Board of County Commissioners appoints members to the Planning Commission per B C R C 12-122. So positions A, B, and C are vacant on the Planning Commission due to expiration. The Chair of the Board is recommending the following people to be appointed to the vacant positions. A, in seat A, Dave Bowman; in seat B, Brendan Mooney; in seat C, Larry Madoski. And this has been reviewed and approved by legal. And there are three separate resolutions for the board to consider.
So the board voted that, or had a discussion that each person was going to be voted on individually. And so we'll go A, B, and C on this particular one. So the first option is to entertain a motion regarding seat A, position A, which is a three-year term?
Yes, these are all three-year terms.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2562, appointing Dave Bowman to the Planning Commission and assigning him to position A.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board. Hearing none, rule call vote. Yes?
No.
Yes.
All right, regarding position B, positioning Brendan Mooney. Is there a motion on this item?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2563, appointing Brendan Mooney to the Planning Commission and assigning him to position B.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board. Hearing none, rule call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Regarding position C, Larry Madoski.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2564, appointing Larry Madoski to the Planning Commission and assigning him to position C.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board. Hearing none, rule call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Stane.
So the next item I have, similar to this, is the appointment of zoning commissioners. So per 12-123, the board shall appoint members of the zoning commission. Positions A, D, and E will be vacant on the zoning commission due to expiration and one resignation. Chairman of the board is, excuse me, recommending the following people to be appointed to the vacant positions. In seat A, Michelle Johnson; in seat D, Colton Boils; in seat E, Joe Mock.
All right, so with regard to position A, is there a motion?
I moved to adopt Resolution 2565, appointing Michelle Johnson to the zoning commission and assigning her to position A to fulfill the remainder of the term.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any comment from the public on this one? Seeing none, deliberation by the board.
Did I see an email last week that she's involved in a lawsuit with the county? Or is that another Michelle Johnson?
That is not, that is not this person.
It's a different person.
It's not a Michelle. The last name is the same. And it's not a lawsuit.
What is it?
We'll talk.
Yeah.
Apparently, it's an executive session.
Well, since you said it out loud, I had to correct that because I always say lawsuits, okay. On this one, my position, because we're in deliberation now, was that my recommendation, my vote in our open meeting was that she had planning experience. my vote in our open meeting was that she had planning experience in her background. The position that she's being asked to fill is a short one year. My recommendation was that she take the three-year seat. She had, she answered questions very well in the interview process. She had a background in planning and she had the commitment to this particular group. And so although I want I want to support this person being seated, the position is what I questioned because I felt that she was a better fit for a the three-year than the one-year. Because I believe it's her starts October 1st through the end, so.
So position A is the one-year?
Yes, it is the remainder of a term.
So would you like, are you suggesting we move her to position D?
That is my suggestion is that Michelle fill position D.
Okay. So then your suggestion would be that we vote down the current motion on the table and then come up with a new motion to, I think we're going to require amendment to the resolution then? If we were to proceed with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are you suggesting shifting her to seat D, which is a three-year?
Correct. I think she was.
And then you're going to shift Colton Boils to A, which is a one-year?
I'm not making that comment now. I'm just commenting on Michelle Johnson in terms of her presentation in the interview process. Because we're voting on them individually, so that's the only way to bring up the issue with Michelle is to, after the motion's been made, to say I think that she performed better. She has planning experience for a three-year, not a remainder of a term position. Any further comments on this item?
No.
Okay. Is there any desire of, because so the next step is to call for a roll call vote on the motion on the table, which is the one term. So roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
I'm saying no because I'm trying to get a three-year term.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Is there another motion regarding Michelle Johnson that someone wants to put forward?
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2025-65, appointing Michelle Johnson to the zoning commission and assigning her to position D.
Is there, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Williams?
Yes?
Mr. Ford?
No.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
All right. As it relates to Colton Boils, is there a motion on, available?
So just to be clear, I'll make a motion for position A for Mr. Boils so the board can make a decision.
Okay.
So I move to adopt resolution 2025-66, appointing Colton Boils to the zoning commission and assigning him to position A to fulfill the remainder of the term.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board?
So I have received public comment with regard to some land use related history with this particular applicant, and that's changed my opinion on how I intend to vote for this position. So that's the reason I brought the motion forward so we could discuss that.
So during our deliberation and interview process on Mr. Boils, I had kind of put the landscape of where we all kind of said who we were in favor of and in that seat. I believed that Wendy Cosette would be a good fit for that. I I felt in the in the interview process that Mr. Boils did answer questions well, but he wasn't as prepared as other applicants were for the position. And I felt like that was a better better fit for Wendy Cosette to take that term. Commissioner Corn.
I didn't feel that way. I thought it would be a great asset on the team, having the legal background that Mr. Boils does, that he might be able to provide that same service also. With the zoning commission, I did not share your same thoughts with Wendy Cosette, as it looked like she was kind of following the lead of Dave Bowman. I think that was even discussed during that interview.
I don't recall that being discussed. I think in in Ms. Cosette's case, she was forthcoming on things that she didn't know and that what she did research. And from my view, sitting here watching Mr. Boils, he had his laptop up and it looked like he was looking up some of the answers. He read specific out of the code, which felt like he wasn't prepared for the interview in real time. Whereas that was one of my noticeable difference, and I did make comment on that in that meeting. But I don't know who would fill the seat because we're looking at Colton Boils' placement because that's what the recommendation of the majority vote was at that time. But my position was I felt that Wendy was a better interview than Mr. Boyle was. Any further? All right. Roll call vote on the motion on the table.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
No.
Mr. Williams?
No. Regarding position E, Joe Mock.
I move to adopt resolution number 2025-67, appointing Joe Mock to the zoning commission and assigning him to position E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
No.
So commissioners, for some direction here on.
So on Mr. on position A, the one that needs to be filled, we need to open it back up.
Okay.
For interviews for to finish out that term.
Okay.
That's reasonable and fair. And that was one of the things that Mr. or Commissioner Corn had wanted also was to look at an open. And since we voted to not fill that particular seat, I think it's reasonable to do it to do another advertisement.
Okay, I can do that.
Does the board, does the board agree with that viewpoint?
Yes.
Of opening it back up for position A? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll turn it over to Daniel Britt.
Yep.
Commissioners, good morning. The next item we have to present to you is the final plat for file S 0005-24, Bahia del Sol, second edition. Above reference plat is requesting to subdivide 13.89 acres into 23 lots ranging in size from 10,000 square feet to 23,720 square feet. The property is owned suburban. The project is located off Fiesta Shores Drive and Bonita Bay Lane. Both Bonner County owned and privately maintained public right of ways in section two, township 56, range two west Boise Meridian, Idaho. The lots will be served by Mountain Springs Water and Southside Water and Sewer for water and sewer services respectively. Preliminary plat was approved by Bonner County on August 7, 2025. The applicant's engineer has provided improvements and cost estimate. Both were reviewed and approved by the county engineers. The applicant has provided surety agreement per Bonney County Revised Code and a bond for 150,000 or sorry, 150% of the remaining improvements in accordance with the surety agreement conditions and final plat approval. The conditions of approval of this file have been completed. Notes and easements required by plat are approved and shown on the final plat. Legal reviewed the surety agreement March 14, 2025, and is currently recorded under instrument 1044586. This surety was approved under file SS 0002-24.
Does the board have any questions?
Surety agreement date. I didn't look up the instrument number. I'm just curious. I would have thought that would have occurred after the board's approval of the preliminary plat on August 7.
So this, there was a short plat that was done in 2024 for the first addition. And part of that bonding was for the roads that will access these lots as well. So that was done at that time. These are the same roads that will be used for the second addition.
Okay. So that's the continuity then of the first addition.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to the final plat of Bahia del Sol, second edition, planning file number S 0005-24, and authorize the chair to sign the final plat.
I think we the word approve was missing from the proposed resolution. I'm sorry, proposed motion.
Move to approve.
Yeah, I think that was missing in the in the language of what was typed as a suggestion.
Do you like me to read it again for clarification?
Please do.
Just remove the word two also. Just say move or the you're approve after the two.
Move to.
Move to approve the file?
I move to approve the final plat. Okay, ready? I move to approve the final plat of Bahia del Sol, second edition, planning file number S 0005-24, and authorize the chair to sign the final plat.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this one? Seeing none deliberation by the board? So my only comment is my vote will be in line with the way in which I voted originally because I try to be consistent on it. So roll call vote.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
No. All right, next item, Mr. Britt.
Okay, item number two I have for you this morning is the adoption of a resolution for file AM 001-25 for a comp plan amendment from rural residential to transition. Above reference comprehensive map amendment was approved at a public hearing on September 10, 2025 to change the comprehensive plan map from rural residential to transition. The project is located in section 32, township 56 North, range two west Boise Meridian, Idaho.
All right. Any questions for the planner?
No.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number 2025-68, amending the Bonner County projected land use map from rural residential to transition for the parcel in this file AM 0001-25 totaling approximate seven, I'm sorry, 2.794 acres.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. All right. Next item is Bonner County opioid settlement agreement. So Bonner County had already signed an agreement regarding the this type of fund. And so this is really just, I'm going to just explain what we did do. So additional additional settlements that Purdue and Sackler family have been reached recently. This has triggered the need for all funding recipients, whether they reallocated their settlement funds or not, to agree or not to agree to participate in these additional settlements in order to receive funding associated with these settlements. Once Bonner County agrees to the Purdue and Sackler settlement, any funds associated with that settlement will be reallocated to PHD based on the designation made in August 29, 2022. There are additional settlements that have come through since I wrote that note. But the way I wrote the motion is just to address reaffirming what we already did, which is putting our putting the money back to Panhandle Health. So I'm going to answer a question I think everybody is probably thinking is why would we give them our money versus doing it? Because the work of managing that fund is not cost effective, so it was a better option to hand it to Panhandle Health. That's why the decision was made in '22 to do it that way. So with that, any questions?
Yeah. So I think I was absent for that meeting possibly because I don't recall it for some reason. So could you just go into a little bit more detail as far as is Purdue and Sackler suing someone for opioid abuse?
So the opioid is across the nation. So the opioid settlements. And so this particular families receive settlements. And so the counties are getting an allotment of money. And so it's not specific to Bonner County. We didn't have a meeting on this. It's just we got notification that it we got triggered to have to go back in online and affirm our process by which we want the money to be distributed. And so that's all that this is, is saying, continue doing what we've always been doing with this settlement of money, and the money goes to Panhandle Health District.
So are we just a pass through? Or is this funding coming from taxpayer-based money?
No, this is coming from opioid settlement.
Okay.
So it's a court cases. So that's what it is. And so we're, I don't want to use the word pass through because that's for a grant. Pat, so what it is, is Bonner County could say, yes, we just want to receive our money. But there's a management aspect that comes with this settlement agreement that what we're doing is instead of doing that, the health district was we're given the option to just say, send ours to the health district. And so we've been doing that since 2022. And so because more money came into the opioid settlement agreement, we have to redesignate that we want to continue the same process. And.
Yeah, if I understand correctly, Commissioner, it's isn't it part of the administration that you have to have a program in place to assist people?
Correct.
That have that issue. And so we, we the county don't have the program, but the health district does.
We don't want to make it.
That's why the prior board decided it made more sense to have the health district receive the funds and therefore do the administration providing the program. Otherwise, if we just took it directly into the county, we'd have to establish a program to utilize those funds, which is an overhead expense that probably doesn't make sense.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. All right. At this time, is there a motion on this item? I gave a suggestion one there.
Yep. Based on the information before us, I move that the Bonner County affirm its reallocation to participate in the opioid settlement agreement to Panhandle Health.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any question or comment from the public on this item?
Any oversight?
Of Panhandle there for the funds on the Panhandle Health side, yes, not from us, though. All right. His question was, is there any oversight? Brett Arndt for the record, Bonner County resident.
Yes.
Still, you just say still. All right. Further deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Donkey?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Next item is Commissioner Donkey.
Okay, I have Board of Commissioners Chair item before us. So in accordance with Idaho Code 31-705, the Bonner County Board of Commissioners elected a chair from their number upon the seating of the new board on January 13, 2025. During the discussion regarding the election of the chair, I offered the perspective that the chair position is one that creates additional duties and responsibilities for the elected board member, and that the position of chair should be shared equally throughout the duration of the two-year term of the board. As such, it's my proposal that a new chair should be elected every eight months, allowing the position to be rotated between all the members of the board over the two-year period. This approach would result in the election of a new chair at this time and again in May of '26. This memorandum has been reviewed and approved by our county legal counsel. And I just want to state clearly that this is not anything personal when it comes to the performance of our current chairwoman. It's just a perspective that I personally hold when it comes to sharing of responsibilities amongst the board. And I believe that there's a benefit to doing that. And so this was a suggestion, as I said, that I made when I was seated. And so I wanted to follow through with that suggestion I had made at that time, now that we've come to that point in the year and that point within the two-year cycle of this particular board. So I bring this forward for the board's consideration. I will not make the motion. I will, presented it, I will leave it to see whether or not the board is in agreement and wants to move forward.
I'll make the motion. Based on the information before us, I move to elect Brian Donkey as chair of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners.
I'll second the motion for discussion. So we'll go to public comment on the motion on table. See Priscilla Emmett. See Priscilla Emmett?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think that you should keep the chair. I think that Asia Williams is doing a fantastic job, and I don't make it, don't mess with what's not broken. Thank you.
Diane Welly?
Yes, Diane Welly, for the record. While I think Brian Donkey is certainly appropriate to chair a meeting, I think that the most experienced commissioner should hold that position. Thank you.
John Dupree for the record. I'm a resident of the county, and I campaigned for all three of you. So I endorse and encourage and happy with all three of you. Now, having said that, Asia has got a lot of experience at doing this, and I believe she's done a fine job. And even though I would love for any of you to be the person in charge, I think Asia should be the one. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none deliberation by the board?
So recalling the conversation that we had when we first did this eight months ago, it was suggested that we did rotate the chair every eight months so that all three commissioners had a fair opportunity to gain that experience that people are discussing right now. And I do think that it would be a great experience for the other two commissioners to do their time as chair and not just rely on one person. Nothing negative here, as Commissioner Donkey stated earlier, it's just a chance and an opportunity for the other two commissioners to be able to get that same experience. I believe, looking back in the past, I don't believe Commissioner Williams chaired until, I don't know if it was October or if it was actually in January when the new board got sworn in. So Commissioner Williams has done a great job. She's been doing this for eight months. And according to our agreement that we originally did eight months ago, it's time to rotate it around and give someone else the opportunity to do the same.
So I'll give a comment. So there wasn't an agreement, there was a comment by a commissioner. And so I want to clarify that. I actually do see the point of rotating who your chair is, it's just when you do it. My recommendation is that you rotate your chair at the reorganization time of the county as a whole, which takes place, not in between, because I think that there's, there's an element there of that's, you have to change at that point, and it gives you the opportunity. So I don't, I don't have a comment to make about any individual person, it's just I think that there is a reorganization period built into the system that's already in existence. And so that's what I would say, rotating arbitrarily on an eight-month schedule, I understand the idea and behind it, and I understand the desire to do that, but I think it should just be done when the county is structured to reorganize its board. I think we've seen a, unless there's an extenuating circumstance that occurs, that's, that's my position on the chair of the board. And it's not your, so I'll just leave it at that kind of deal, so. Any further deliberation?
I don't have any.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain?
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next one is on vice chair.
So the Bonner County Board of Commissioners has a history of assigning one of its members as the vice chair. The full extent of the duties and authority of the vice chair position is not known to have been formally defined, which can create confusion. As such, is my suggestion that the Board of Commissioners dissolve the position of vice chair and adopt the use of Idaho Code 31 dash 706 in the following manner. There are three points. The first is, one, should a meeting hearing occur when the chair is not present, those members of the board who are present vote to elect one of their members as the temporary chair for that meeting or hearing. Two, the temporary chair has the authority to sign as the chair any documents associated with the decisions made by the board during that meeting hearing that was facilitated by the temporary chair. And three, any of the normal duties of the chair, those that are not specific to the meeting in which a temporary chair was used, as defined by Idaho Code, remain unchanged and are not assumed by the temporary chair. This memorandum has been reviewed and approved by our legal counsel. And I just want to state the reason this has been obviously discussed with legal counsel. Idaho Code 31 dash 706 was brought up to the board at one point in time regarding if we should use that in lieu of a vice chair. The, as we reviewed and looked at Idaho Code, this part of code was less than clear with all of its intent and how to apply it, in my opinion. And that's why I think it's important that if we're going to utilize that aspect of the code, that we would agree to these three items so that we have clarity about how that functions. My example is that as a vice chair, after a meeting occurred, because the chair was unavailable, when I chaired that meeting, I was asked to sign a document that could legally only be signed by the chair. And so there was no authority for the vice chair to sign that document. And so I think that that created confusion in a problematic condition. And so I think that if we follow Idaho Code 31 dash 706 with these understandings, then we would have clarity as to what the roles and responsibilities are when the chair is not present and we have someone who's acting as the temporary chair. But I just think there was a little bit of a lack of clarity in how some of that plays out based on this, just the language in Idaho Code all by itself.
I have a question for legal on this one, because when I had the, this conversation, part of the problem is we don't need, need to do anything because the statute requires us to elect a chair. It doesn't require us to elect anything else. And so by, by doing something, you create kind of your guardrails, but that in the absence, the chair is specific to doing your meeting and your signing documents, but in the absence of it, it, can you give clarification on the official idea of voting before each meeting for a temporary chair?
I can, so I think, by the way, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Donkey on this, this idea. And for, as long as I've been here, we have had a vice chair. There are other places in Idaho law for different types of governing bodies where the position of vice chair is specifically identified and voted on the way we do for the chairman or chairwoman, as it were. We've always had the standing, essentially the standing order of the vice chair, and I think it's mainly for convenience sake, but the statute that talks about appointing the chairman does not include the vice chair, right? There's a separate provision that Brian just alluded to that basically makes it something you have to do each time that the chairman is unavailable. So in essence, what we did was, instead of making that decision each time in the meeting, we made it a standing order. Now, whether or not that would survive judicial scrutiny, I think it probably would, but because it's not specifically identified in the statute that addresses the appointment of the vice chair for that limited purpose, and we did have questions about that, I think it's just an opportunity to clean up our procedure and follow the very narrow language of the law. So I imagine there are probably other counties that have the position of vice chair as a standing position, and that might be fine for them. But given the, the dispute we had over the position, I agree that the safest thing for us to do is just to follow the statute. It will result in a bit more of, one more procedural hoop to jump through in the event that now Commissioner Donkey is unavailable. You'll have to actually make a motion to choose one of the other two commissioners to be the vice chair for purposes of that hearing or meeting. It's okay to do that, though.
So that's what I'm asking for clarification on, because it wouldn't, if you're having to do the vote and something happens, it's just, are you treating it as an administrative vote in the public then? Is that, I'm asking for guidance on what you're saying that would be.
You mean like in the event that the chairman's not present, how do we handle it?
Yeah, what is your process that you're saying? Because before, this question was, it's an administrative outside of the chair. And so you can, you don't need it to be agendized, essentially.
No, it doesn't, and that's a good question.
So when you say vote, it looks a little bit more technical. So I'm asking you to explain what that is before we vote on the way this is written.
The statute says that when the chairman is unavailable, that the, the board members in attendance must select a vice chair and make it known in the minutes. I think that, I don't have the statute in front of me, I'm trying to do it from memory. That does imply that it's a decision, and ordinarily, you know, we would probably, we like to agendize decisions, but that's not the way the statute obviously is worded. You might not know that the chairman is going to be unavailable at that meeting. So the way I read the statute is, if the chairman is unavailable, we make note of that at the outset of the meeting, and then one member of the board who is in attendance makes a motion to appoint either himself or herself or the opposite person. You vote on that, you approve it, it makes, it's noted in the minutes, and then you proceed with the meeting.
So an official vote then?
That's right.
A motion with a vote?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any further questions before we entertain a motion? We have to do a motion first, Scott, wait.
All right, at this time we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County affirm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. It says B O C C on it. Based on the information before us, I move to dissolve the Bonner County Board of Commissioners position of vice chair and adopt the use of Idaho Code 31 dash 706 as outlined in this memorandum.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. What's your name again? Brett Arn? Go ahead now.
I lost my wallet.
Cynthia.
Brett Arn, still a Bonner County resident. What happens, I mean, based in things that I've seen in the past with other commissions, what happens if the two don't agree and vote against each other? That means you don't have a vice chair.
Then you don't have a meeting.
Right.
Well, is that?
That is what would happen.
I think that would be unprofessional.
Well, I've seen.
I know what you've seen. I've seen it too.
All right. So Dave, your hand went up, then it went down.
That's because that third man, Brett Arn, stole my question.
He stole your thunder. All right, any other comments? Seeing none deliberation by the board?
I do think it is proper, and as Mr. Wilson stated, we need to clean things up, follow the statutes a little bit better. We could run into the situation where the chair is not available, and if we continue down the road of having a vice chair, that vice chair may not be available in person, leaving only the other commissioner in person, which evidently cannot run a meeting when the vice chair is on Zoom. So this would help solve that problem. And to address Mr. Arn's concern, I think it would be very unprofessional that someone would not give in, for lack of better words, to be able to continue with the meeting.
I agree.
Yes. So I think that's the only deliberation that I really have.
All right.
Yeah, I'll just go back to, because I personally experienced the confusion over people seeking to have documents signed to finalize them when the vice chair was the one that presided over a meeting. I think we need to avoid that confusion in the future and try to make it as clear as possible. I don't, as Mr. Wilson said, I don't, I don't think it was inappropriate to have a vice chair position. There, there is also a part in statute that talks about the board's ability to establish its own administrative procedures. So I, I think it's been legal and appropriate for this board or other boards under state statute to have a vice chair if they choose to do so. But if we thought a vice chair was the right way to do it, then I think we would need to clearly define the roles and responsibilities, whereas right now it doesn't exist and it's created some problems. And so I think it would be cleaner, instead of trying to establish our own unique roles and responsibilities of a vice chair, I think it'd be cleaner to work with this statute with the simple guidelines that have been presented.
Anything further?
I agree.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Up next, District One, Commissioner update.
All right, the majority.
Oh, we forgot, we're still here. You left and you came back. I had Dynamic Electric.
Dynamic Electric, okay.
So we're reviewing the purchase of services through Dynamic Electric.
Correct. Royal Lakehold's still here for the record. So part of my confusion came in when it started out saying Bonner County Sheriff's Office Jail is not, this is for the Marine Division. It will be paid for out of our general buildings and repair budget. So this is two-part, part of what this accomplishes is currently we run an extension cord to our command post to keep it, we have to keep the battery tenders on it, keep the generator, for the generator onboard stuff. It's also got heat that, and computers and stuff, everything onboard, we kind of keep just in function while it's not in use. And so during the winter time, we keep it in the marine building. This keeps it plugged in and, and ready to go. Currently, we have the, it's a cord that we drape across the floor, and so it's creating a trip hazard and, you know, they can't run boat trailers and stuff over it in the boat, the thing that moves boat trailers. And so this will be an overhead drop for that. So that's the 50 amp drop. There's a, we got approved for a, an enhancement through this year's budgeting process for the fiscal '26 year for two workstations for two of the employees in the bay. And so these will be outlets for those. And then additionally, the drop down with the, the, I don't know what they're calling them here, reels, yeah. So they're going to put a couple reels over the boats. So again, so we're not running extension cords all over the place. They can have a drop down electrical service while they're working on the boats and, and keep the cords out of, out of the way.
All right. Thank you for getting that information. All right, does the board have any questions for Under Sheriff?
I do, and I'm sorry if this is information you don't have, but given the, that we now understand the nature of use, do you know if these are going to all be rated for wet environments, like out specialists?
Well, they're, so we use a commercial, the electrician's commercial licensed electrician, and they have, because it's a commercial facility, we have to keep it to that standard. So I'm certain that they will all be that. I will say that in the past, when we've brought in a commercial electrician, that's part of what they do is clean up what hadn't been done in years past, so.
That makes sense, it just wasn't, wasn't specific in the estimates.
Any further questions?
Nope.
All right, at this time we'll entertain a motion.
Do you like me to make one up? Based on the information before us, I move to approve the purchase of electrical services from Dynamic Electric for a total of $9,500 and 0 cents for the Bonner County Sheriff's Office Marine Division.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're to District One, Commissioner update.
Okay, I'm just going to highlight, since the last week was primarily spent going down to Boise to attend the Idaho Association of Counties Conference for future ID counties was the theme, and I'm sure, I apologize, my fellow commissioners, it's going to be a little bit of redundancy here, but I'd like to highlight some of the things that I took away that I thought were really valuable. And to be honest, I'm very critical of going to these types of conferences because I don't always find a ton of value in some of the information that's presented, and so I choose not to attend some because I want it to be a good investment of our time and money. But I did find a lot of value in this particular conference, and I chose And I chose to attend because I had multiple workshops available for each of the sessions throughout the three days. So you get that options of what topics you were going to focus on. I focused on those that were associated with planning, the financing, and the delivery method for capital projects. I think most of you have heard me talk about before that one of the visions I have is I'd like, while I'm in office, to have the county complete a building condition survey that will then feed into developing a long-range capital plan so that we understand what major components of our facilities have a shortened remaining lifespan and when it would need to be replaced and what the cost of that replacement is likely to be. So we can start future planning in our budget in a way that the county hasn't done in the past. And then, so they had some workshops that were helpful to that end to look at some of the options that are available to us. Also had an opportunity that was a little bit more coincidental, but I think still valuable in building relationships with both staff members and one of the board members of ICrimp, since I anticipate our board will likely approach them again next year for the fiscal year '27 to see whether or not they might be an insurance option for us to consider. And so I know that our board has been sensitive to trying to work on those relationships. And so that opportunity existed while I was there, and so I was glad to have had that. I also did learn about a potential funding source to help offset some of the costs for our director for Veteran Services. There's a specific federal grant that has money flowing through the states that we might be able to take advantage of to help offset a little bit of the cost for that director that I learned through one of the workshops that I attended. So I'll be looking into that more. And as I gain more information about that, because it's not currently been rolled out to the states yet in order for the counties to apply for it. But I'll make our Veteran Services Director aware of that so we can start to track that and apply for that when it becomes available. And then also, there was an opportunity at the very end of that conference for the membership of the Idaho Association of Counties, for each county to vote on resolutions that ultimately may be presented by the Idaho Association of Counties to the legislature. We essentially lobby for ourselves when it comes time for legislative session. And the things I wanted to highlight that were unanimously approved by the counties that were present for that meeting was one, to essentially revert the House Bill 180 language when it comes to telecommunications facilities, where it was taking away some of our local county autonomy with decision-making on the approval or denial of those applications. They were modifying shop clocks and doing other restrictions that go above and beyond what federal code requires. And so they've, the state chose to become more restrictive than federal code, which is never a good thing. And so they're trying to get that to be rolled back. And so that was one of the things that was voted on to bring forward. The other item that to note was, they also looked at multiple options, three I believe, on different tax methodologies for things like short-term vacation rentals and lodging to help counties have a vehicle to recoup some tax monies to help offset the infrastructure, infrastructure costs that we incur when we have folks vacationing in our county. So they were looking at things like short-term vacation rentals and lodging, where there could be essentially a luxury tax, if you would, or a local option tax that would be associated with those particular types of uses. Or a portion of that could come to the county to help us pay for some of those infrastructure costs. And then finally, one that I'm sure everyone can get behind was to bring forward to the legislature no new mandates from our state government without funding. So unfunded mandates, mandates are not something that we approve of as counties. And so we want to make sure that the legislature understands that. So the processes, all of these were voted on. Because they received approval along with some others, that will then go to the Idaho Association of Counties. The Legislative Committee will decide how to prioritize these to finalize them before they get brought forward, before next, the upcoming year's session. So, but I just want the folks to be aware that those are some things that were, resolutions that were brought forward by subcommittees that were then voted on by the full body. And those should be moving forward. And I think those will be positive impacts if we can actually get the legislature to adopt what's being presented. Does anybody have any questions about any of the information I presented?
All right, seeing none, District Two Commissioner report.
So I'm going to skip the ones that Commissioner Donkey spoke about. I sit on our intergovernmental affairs and then on our revenue and tax. And so there's a lot that's coming through. But one of the good things is if you missed everything that is said in this meeting, as vice chair for our region, we are going to actually have IAC address all of these things with our state legislatures so that we get an understanding of where they're going to sit with this. Because for the counties to say this is what is important to us doesn't really help us unless the state legislatures take part in this. And so there are a couple of other ones that were significant for us. But also I want to tell you a couple that failed because there are things that people ask for. So in our Revenue and Tax Committee, there was a request that we look at the homestead exemption. That did not pass. And it was trying to address kind of an old rule in Idaho regarding homesteads. The other thing that we did address was region service enhancements and a lot related to how counties get their taxes to include vacation rentals, but also resort areas. And so what you're going to see basically is that at this next legislative session, there's going to be a robust discussion on how we're taxing. Is it realistic to think that property tax is going away? There's not a plan that actually has been put forward. What you're really going to see is a true discussion on the way in which we tax in Idaho. And so if you remember last year, I had done a few legislative discussions with representatives of concerns regarding the direction of property tax and the impacts that it's having. It has stirred up the conversation. But an actual plan to address deconstructing and then reconstructing, that has not been put forward. So hopefully people weren't hopeful that by the end of next year, there's going to be no property tax there. But the conversation has been started, which is a big deal for us. One of the other things that is on our horizon to pay attention to is looking at the local, local option tax for jails. We did not participate when that took place. There are counties where they did participate with that and that helped them fund their jails. That is going to be a direction that the IAC looks at to see if we can't review revisiting that idea again. That's sunsetted. The other, when we go on to our intergovernmental affairs, there's been some requests from clerks. One of the things is the counties are still paying for law clerks that belong to the state without us having any say in what it is that they're doing. We don't even review work performance. We essentially just pay the bill. So there's a request that the state take on that responsibility. The other question that has come up that did pass is reviewing public funding of Panhandle Health and how the funds are managed there. So you're going to see a little bit more work on what impacts counties. But partly what that's going to require is more of us making sure our representatives understand our views from up north. I did agree to sit on another committee, mostly because we need to have a voice in North Idaho on rural counties and the impacts that happens there. We had a meeting on Sunday before the conference started. And there was a lot of discussion from a lot of different counties that are impacted by travel and tourism. And what is the real impact in terms of your actual base? When you look at some of the things like our emergency services deals with is in the summertime, we have a significant increase in population. But the foundation of availability of those services is born on the backs of the residents here. So how do we address that such that we're not negatively impacting a funding source of tourism, but we're also not overburdening people that are residents here? So you're going to see that conversation, a robust conversation. But it's going to require us to make those phone calls to legislatures to let them know what we want them to work on. We're also putting more focus on the House Bill 180, like Commissioner Donkey mentioned. It's going to have a standout kind of conversation. We're also going to revisit the noticing requirements of counties because it does cost us money. They made waves last session and it looked like we might pass it, but it didn't. There's a lot of opposition from newspapers because it's a funding source that goes that direction. But it is a, there's a little bit of tweaks that is happening this go-round that people should look to. And in part, it's to help decrease the budget of the county. When you look at how many times we're noticing, that's a lot of money that we send out to meet that requirement. Is there a better way to do that? I will tell you that our state comptroller said, thank you. He enjoyed doing the commissioner chat. We got to go over the metrics of people that watched the video. We gave all of the feedback that you guys sent me after people watched the video was given to him. He's actually open to us giving suggestions on what we would like to see better on Transparency Idaho. He did take back comments that were made specifically on the town hall where we go and we click, but we can't actually see the link to the meeting and we have to dig deeper and then a lot of times give up. He is actually taking that to the governor to say, this was a requirement that people participate. We need that link to be easily accessible once they get there. And so he did take that to heart because if you recall in our discussion, there wasn't a link when there should have been a link. And so he did move forward with that. So he found it to be a very good opportunity because he's been able to also share that video with people on what that site does. And so that was beneficial. I participate with a lot of stuff in our community. There's a lot going on with grant funding. And so I am going to give a shout out with the recognition that they want a commissioner chat with Pisni. We had an event last Saturday regarding the changes that are happening with the Panhandle Special Needs Group. And so one of the things that's happening with that group is that the location that they are in is subleased and they need, they need a move. And they need support in that move. And so understanding what they provide our county is critical. They did do a commissioner chat, I want to say two years ago, we did one. But they need to do an updated one because they have now purchased the land. We were, we worked in little groups on the Saturday to kind of identify some ideas of how to get the funding because they're looking at a need of about $4.7 million to complete that. When you look at the services that they provide, it's worth kind of having that communication. One of the things, other things that happened was at our LEPC, we had the discussion with our superintendent, Dr. Myers, of needing to do a summit to address mental health again. It is going to be, it's a, for me, I think it's a huge request and I'm going to see how much buy-in and support we can get. But if we could get our Meeting of the Minds discussion before February 2026, we might have a better opportunity to have people sitting on a panel to discuss schools and mental health because she's slating to have her event in February. And so we have kind of the support of like our Kynixu Health and other partners. But we're trying to identify how do we make positive gains. Bonner County as a county has a significant number of suicides. We don't go a month without a suicide in our county. Attracting mental health services is important. Addressing the impacts of social media in our society is important, especially on our students. And she's trying to get in front of that. We also address the need to push other schools to actively participate with what is available to us. So I know that's a lot to digest. There's a lot going on. I will, once I finish the newsletter for the November 21st meeting with the legislatures, I will just post it online and give it to the county so you can see what passed, what failed, what the talking points are specifically. Oh, I do have to do another one. So I met with EMS, staff members, kind of to go over issues, concerns, things that they want to see, things that we're working on. One of the things that they asked me to work on, as I've been focused on insurance and risk, was to take a look at insurance, which I said I would work on before January, once we hit that stopgap. So we've got a lot of work completed. Thank you to Kevin for putting together kind of a compare contrast of where could we go and kind of what they're looking for. We did expose a couple of gaps. For staff members, one of the issues with EMS is their base salary is identified as a metric to use for buying additional insurance coverage, but it's not really representative of what their salaries are. So we're working to figure out how do we address that. Because we're trying to build and attract our department. There is, we are in a state of transition in that area, but we're working on that closely to make sure we can have as seamless a transition. We did hit a hiccup, but Chief Lindsey was working on that today. So welcome all the questions about it, but we're doing good. I think it was today, he said that the bank said we had $200,000 extra that we didn't know that was in there. So we'll probably bump our end of the year up to about 1.4. But that doesn't mean, 1.4 million, but that doesn't mean that we might not need a tan still. If you recall, we had a drop of money in at that beginning of that fiscal year. So we're still, don't take that dollar amount to mean that there won't be a tan. We're trying to be thoughtful about making sure we communicate the possibility, probability of that, while equally saying we're doing a good job of managing that budget and paying attention to what's impacting that. So with that, Clarissa has a question. Let's go to Clarissa first.
Good morning. Of course, the Congress of Bonner County Treasurers, good record. I just wanted to mention the $200,000 in the EMS account. We've known it's been there. It's, what it's called is a pay account. And based on the contract that the county had with our bank, we were required to keep a flat $200,000 balance in the account. So we've known it's there. We just can't use it because of the requirement.
So what, and maybe there's a disconnect between the person who communicated this morning to Chief Lindsey because that person is saying, not that it, that's that 200 can actually get pulled into his budget. It doesn't have to be a placeholder anymore. And so that's what I mean when I say that it, that money is actually to be able to be pulled forward into the budget. Not that we're spending it, but that it's getting pulled forward. That he doesn't have to have a $200,000 place saver as we transition. There is a hectic week next week because of the transition and the need for training of the staff. Our ambulance district meeting is going to be on the Monday. It's going to be a lot lighter because there's a lot that's happening as we go through this transition with the banks and the different staff members that will be signers on that. So with that, anything specific to what I said?
It's coming Monday?
Yes. All right. Oh, no, I saw you and I remembered. October 6th, Priest River City Council meeting. We are, it's the Bonner County West Park. So there's going to be opportunity for discussion. The board was invited to attend that by Mayor Connolly. So I'm telling you specifically, Fred Arn, to clear your calendar for the 6th at about 6:00 PM, maybe 5:45 because they might start a little bit early. But in part, the, we need to make a decision on what is the county's involvement with the city, if anything. They, one of the things that they do have in that building is a map that shows you a little bit more of that plan that we don't have an availability to see. But that meeting is on the 6th of October.
Right. My opinion stays the same.
Nope. I still tell you the information. All right.
I don't want to hear what I have to say.
All right, with that, District Three Commissioner.
So I also attended the IAC conference, attended many of the classes that were already discussed. I sit on the Natural Resources Board there and kind of learned why federal government doesn't move too fast when you have a 10-minute class discussion from a Forest Service guy. And he literally talked about 10 minutes about his manuals and his policies. Never talked about anything else. You got to refer back to a manual for a policy and everything else. So anyways, I didn't get much out of that one. But they also had a home burial discussion, which I thought was very kind of unique that in Idaho, there, you can have a home burial and you really aren't limited by any rules or regulations. The county can put regulations on, but I don't think Bonner County has any. So I appreciated the fact that we live in Idaho in such a great, freedom-loving, liberty-minded state. So everything else was, I think, pretty much already discussed on that. I do have something here that I would like to read. Five months ago, there were some accusations made that I was leaking confidential information, which led to a five-month investigation by the Attorney General's Office. And I would like to read you the report on that real quick. Report on that states that on April 4th of 2025, you asked our office to review complaints that you had received that Bonner County Commissioner Ron Korn violated state criminal law by improperly disclosing confidential information. Specifically, the complaints alleged Korn informed two land developers that an emergency moratorium regarding land use divisions and permits was about to go into effect, allowing the developers to submit last-minute applications. The complaints were concerned that this violated Idaho Code 18-1359C because the information about the moratorium was confidential and gave the two land developers an advantage over the public. We have investigated the allegations you forwarded to our office and we have decided not to file criminal charges for the reasons explained below. The complaints you provided to us were reviewed pursuant to Idaho Code 31-2002. That statute authorizes the Attorney General to conduct a preliminary investigation of any allegation of a violation of state- any allegation of a violation of state criminal law against a county officer occupying an elective office for violation of a state criminal law in his official capacity. Idaho Code 31-2021, allegations you sent us were sufficient to invoke our statutory jurisdiction. Investigation completed by our office revealed the following information. On March 21, 2025, Jake Gabel, the Director of the Planning Department emailed the county commissioners with the request to establish a moratorium on minor land divisions and family exemption applications. The planning department recommended waiting until the upcoming board meeting to amend the agenda as an emergency to avoid last-minute applications from developers. The email also stated, "To avoid a serial meeting and any allegations of open meeting law violation, I believe it is best to refrain from any communications in person or in writing regarding this request until it is brought before the board." On Tuesday morning, the email was not marked confidential, which Gabel acknowledged was a mistake on his part. On March 24th, 2025, land developer Josh Pilch received a text message showing the email sent by Gabel to the commissioners. Pilch did not identify who sent the text message, but did tell our investigator it did not come from Korn. He also stated that he believed the information was public because it was sent to him in a text message and that he did not receive any other information about the moratorium. On March 24th, 2025, land surveyor Dan Provol submitted seven minor land divisions and family exemption applications. Provol told our investigator that the applications had been ready for some time prior to submission. He said the timing of the applications was due in part because of conversations he had with Gabel. Provol said he only knew Korn from doing work with him several years ago and that he has not spoken to Korn since Korn assumed office. On March 2025, 2025, the commissioners passed the moratorium. Due to backlash from the public, the moratorium was paused until May 19th, 2025, to give people a chance to submit applications. Korn told our investigator that he sent Gabel's March 21 email to a single person and only did so to ask whether enacting the moratorium as an emergency action was lawful. He stated that he was trying to prevent an open meeting law violation and to protect the rights of the citizens of the county. Based on the findings of our investigation, criminally charging Korn for disclosing confidential information would not be appropriate. Idaho law prohibits a public official from disclosing confidential information with the intent to obtain pecuniary benefit for himself or any other person or entity in whose welfare he is interested or with the intent to harm the government entity for which he serves. Idaho Code 18-1359-1C. Confidential information means knowledge gained through a public office, official duty or employment by a government entity, which is not subject to disclosure to the general public and which, if utilized in financial transactions, would provide the user with an advantage over those not having such information or result in harm to the governmental entity from which he is obtained. Idaho Code 18-1351-2. There are at least two reasons why criminal charges would not be appropriate. First, the email sent by Gabel to the commissioners on March 21st, 2025, was likely not confidential information as that phrase is defined by the statute. It is not readily apparent that any exemption to the Idaho Public Records Act would apply to the email, meaning the email was subject to disclosure to the general public and thus not confidential information. Idaho Code 18-1351-2. Moreover, the email does not even purport to inform the reader that it had to be kept confidential. Gabel simply stated his opinion that he believed it best to refrain from any communication in person or in writing regarding this request. We find it unlikely that a director of a planning department can silence a county commissioner simply by requesting that the commissioner keep information confidential, especially when the county commissioner has a good faith basis to believe that the suggested action may violate Idaho open meetings law. Second, our investigation did not uncover any facts to suggest Korn disclosed Gabel's email with the requisite intent. The statute requires a specific intent either to obtain a pecuniary benefit for himself or any other person in whose welfare he is interested or to harm the government entity for which he serves. Idaho Code 18-1359-1C. Nothing in the investigation even suggests that Korn stood to benefit financially from disclosing the email or that he disclosed it to any person who stood to financially benefit and in whose welfare Korn is interested. And it would be difficult to argue Korn intended to harm the county, given his legitimate concerns related to the open meetings law and the commissioner's subsequent actions delaying the moratorium. While we do not find any further actions warranted, we appreciate you bringing this matter to our attention. If you have any questions about the investigation or like copies of the investigation reports, please feel free to reach out to our office at any time. So I hope that puts that matter to rest. As elected officials, I feel that it's our duty and our responsibility to provide transparency in government. That's what the people want. We should not be doing business behind closed doors. We actually should be looking for ways to be less intrusive and burdensome on the people instead of making their lives harder. And I will continue to do the people's work as long as I'm here. That's the end of my report.
All right.
I lost my wallet, so I'm not sure who I am.
Fred Arn, for the record.
For the record, Bonner County resident. Listen, I have an idea, listening to you all talk about funding, taxes, how do we pay for things? We have a problem, at least I feel we have a problem, and that is, is that the traffic laws in Bonner County oftentimes are conceptual, you know? People don't always go with what the signs say. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, if the county sheriff issues a traffic ticket, the money goes to the state, it doesn't go to the county. So there's no strong impetus for the county to enforce traffic laws. I mean, it simply is an additional burden to them. So might I suggest that...
You want to be the traffic cop?
When you all...
That's where you're going.
When you all go to...
You'd get a lot of money if Fred was...
I want my time back.
I'm not even counting time at this point. I think my idea is better than yours, but go ahead.
No, no, no. I want you guys to go to the state and say, look, if, if you expect us to enforce these laws, you need to help us pay for the enforcement. So instead of all of that money going to the state, of which we have, what, two ISP officers out here on the highway? Whoa, that's impressive. They don't go back in the rural areas that I'm familiar with. Well, I haven't seen any in my neck of the woods.
I have.
You have?
Yep.
Okay. So even if we have two, there's, there's still, I mean, we can double that with the, with sheriff's deputies. And if we're getting funding, that, that, that provides a financial impetus to enforce the law and it also helps pay for the enforcement of the law. So you might want to talk to the state officials who have that.
While you're there, I will tell you that it's, it's going to be difficult at the state level because I think that the one thing that they reminded us every single day was they don't have any money and the budget is going to be really tight. And so I think that some arguments from constituents of state reps, not just of county people, is how about we do some of these departments that exceed the number we're supposed to have out there and we might free up some money. So I can get you in touch with your elected representatives in Legislative District 1 so that you can tell them what they should do this legislative session.
Well, I just, it was just, I mean, you all have more clout than I do.
Nobody has more clout than Fred Arn.
That's true.
I believe we actually...
I don't know.
Wasn't there a resolution that IAC was trying to pass or did pass saying that if the state continues to mandate to the county that it needs to come with some funding?
Yes. That one's a little more complicated.
That's not this one thing though. It's, that's not what he's talking about. He's talking about the way we're paying, not getting paid for something. When the government tells us, the mandate one was when the government tells us we need to do something, they don't tell us how to pay for it, they just tell us a task needs to be done.
Also, Jason Cop pointed out that enforcing their weight limits, all of that money goes to the state, it doesn't go to the county.
Jason's not online, but I'll have to tell him it is a white X. All right. Speaking of roads, yeah.
Wayne Martin, Bonner County resident. To start off, Jason is not online, but I do want to thank him and the Roads and Bridges for putting up stop signs that have the flashing lights surrounding the stop sign, one of them being at Vay and Dooford. Hopefully, they put one at Spirit Lake Cut Off in Dooford. I would recommend that they end up putting a sign at the, as you get ready to cross, crest that hill, that it is a sleep, steep decline to hopefully get people to slow down during the winter when it's snowing and especially the ice and they slide through that stop sign at the bottom. Again, want to request that Roads and Bridges look at the Bandy Castle, they cut off intersection. That incline is very hard when you stop on Bandy to get traction. And I know there've been at least two incidences where as somebody gets ready to proceed forward, their tires slip and they slide into the vehicle behind them. Fortunately, no major damage occurred. I would like to recommend that EMS still have the tan, they don't have to pay anything if they don't use that money. Preparedness Expo cert training is in October, would like to make sure people are aware of that. I gave you guys in someplace in your packets, multiple articles and all dealing with fire, EMS, 911, the halo law, supply chain disruptions, rethinking urban and rural distinctions, something that probably should be forwarded on to zoning and planning committees. Thinking about the unimaginable mass casualty incidents. We've not had one very easily. It could take place. And there's, there are situations and problems that do take place around this country that those that are involved, both in law enforcement, EMS, fire, and the volunteers that do take place and take care of. And I would also like to suggest when EMS meets, I know that I've let Chief Lindsey know about Colorado has a whole blood program, so that whole blood is on their ambulances. That whole blood has saved lives. One in particular, the Colorado incident, was one where the lady was giving birth, EMS arrived, she was bleeding out, they were able to save her and the child because of that whole blood for transfusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up real quick on, he mentioned the Panhandle Preparedness Expo. Just a quick little plug that the Panhandle Preparedness Expo will be at our county fairgrounds Saturday and Sunday, October 4th and 5th. Thank you, Wayne.
Long time no see.
Yeah, I am back. Cheryl Muster for the record, Bonner County resident. I was just wondering, an update from you guys, where we're at as far as impact fees on developers. I know Asia, you had brought, was Tish here when we had a workshop one time and just, if you guys could fill us in, any, any ideas on that?
I'll tell you my position. It costs money for them to come and do a presentation to us, and so it wouldn't be right for me to ask for another review if there's not support from the board to take a look at development impact fees. But we did do that video and I would say if another commissioner wants to move that direction, then it's worth taking a look at that. But it's, they paid to come and give us that presentation. And, and to be honest, we're coming up on an election cycle and one of the downsides of the development impact fee process is it will loop around elections. And so you need to know before you start investing money that your county is going to be solid on that direction because one of the things they showed in that presentation were the number of counties where they were investing in doing development impact fees by having them start that program, but then when they were all done and ready to vote, that they had a new board and they didn't pass it, so they wasted the money on it. So we would have to have a strong direction to really say we're going to do that. But it's something that should be considered and it's something that I think our comp plan is being developed so that it opens up the availability of it, but for me to ask that company to come back is, that's a hard sell for me to say, come back again, it's a different board. So I think we need to get board members on board with, are we really wanting to go that direction? Because they're down in Boise.
I wasn't particularly looking at them coming back, I was just wondering where you guys are at. As I'm looking at Providence, the road construction and all that, who's paying for that development?
And to go back to the original question, so that's something that I brought up at one of our recent workshops for the comprehensive plan land use component with regard to suggesting that we put some language in there that would lead into the conversation when it comes to implementation and ordinance of the comprehensive plan to consider impact fees for develop, new developments. So that is something that we discussed recently in one of our workshops. And so it's something that still has to play out through the comprehensive plan amendment process and then ultimately, if that gets adopted, then that could become a springboard into ordinance when it comes to looking at what the different vehicles would be to actually make that viable.
Thank you. Let me go Diane and then you, because she's had her hand up.
Diane Welly for the record. I noticed that on 9/9/25 during the land use hearing, we had one commissioner, Commissioner Korn, who gave blanket approval for every single applicant, clearly not having read the material involved since two other commissioners through investigation found problematic issues in violation on several applications. This demonstrates a lack of appropriate homework by an elected. I had hoped that the era of commissioners giving blanket approvals, which gives the appearance of impropriety or apparent benefit for their own construction companies, if any, or those of their friends, it seems to be a major disappointment and abuse of trust and at worst, and an appearance of impropriety at least. As to the P&amp;Z interviews, to see someone interview by looking at a laptop for answers was disconcerting. Thank you for your comments today on that action. Ms. Cassett had no option but to answer the same questions posed to the applicant who gave proper answers to the interview. She didn't copy that person's answers, she merely agreed to proper answers. The interviews were clumsy because each applicant being present during questioning, so in the future, it would seem better to close the door and bring applicants in one at a As to Commissioner Korn's report, because of an error by others, while no criminal charges were imposed on Commissioner Korn, the public knows, excuse me, huh, sorry, I'm coughing. The public knows what he did and at very least, it gave the appearance of impropriety again. He states he will fight for transparency while hypocritically voting against the public being able to view commissioner interviews. Find that problematic. Thank you.
Mike Williams, Bonner County resident. In regards to the letter, I was wondering if you could tell me who you did email?
I'm not going to disclose that right now.
Just asking, transparency, your comment on that. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Next, ma'am.
Hi, Carrie Logan, Bonner County resident. I'm here to find out the status of the ongoing maintenance of the Bonner County Fairgrounds playground. Who's going to be responsible for that and pay the bills and what the plan is, if you can inform me, if you have a plan?
So nothing's been adopted when it comes to the next season, you know, the typical maintenance season for next spring, summer, fall. And we, we already have made the decision for this year, for the duration of this season... And we already have made the decision for this year, for the duration of this season, but we don't have a specific plan in place when it comes to next year at this time.
So the way it was voted on it was that the parks was going to maintain that ground, but to say what that park is going to be, I think in part, there were some questions of, is it the fair's property, or is it the county's obligation? That hasn't been sorted out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further public comment? All right, seeing none...